Okay, no, I was actually gonna be Amsterdam.
So, let me, uh, let me call this regular meeting of the Fairfield Board of Education to order for, um, August 23rd, 2016. Present is Mr. Patton, Ms. Carnell, Mrs. Gerber, Philip Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Fitko, Mrs. Maxon Canelli, Mr. Llewellyn, Eileen, Lou McCormick is on vacation and traveling back today. She didn't think she would be able to get to the meeting tonight. So I think we have who we're going to have. If I could have you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(noise) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we have no student reports. They don't start until school actually starts, probably sometime in October. So we go directly to public comment. Any member of the public wish to come forward to address the board on agenda topics? If they want to, if we're, uh, yeah, on agenda topics. There are no voting items, so normally you would comment about the voting items at the time of the vote. But anybody wants to come forward and address the board?
Hello, I'm Eileen Rossi, Principal Sherman, and I know that you're considering the waterfall changes. And I just wanted to say thank you for considering that.
It would be good if you sat down because the camera angles and the microphone is all based on, you know, the...
All of that fun stuff.
And we have an international audience and...
Oh, I don't have my stage makeup on. But I just wanted to say thank you for considering the change in the waterfall to continue Sherman's building project to completion. We've been waiting since '09. And, you know, it's been a long process to wait for that to be completed, to go through Hurricane Sandy, to watch things. And so we're very hopeful that this will actually get done before I retire. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wish to address the board? Please come forward and state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Sandy Farber. Did you see address as well? Excuse me.
Yes.
Yes, please, I'm sorry.
You can say Fairfield.
Fairfield.
Yeah, well, you know.
I'm the PTA president for Sherman. And I also wanted to thank you for considering the waterfall changes and keeping the Sherman renovation project going so we can finally see it come to completion. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to come forward to address the board? If not, we'll move on to our presentations. First, this is not a long introduction. The Citizen News was very kind to give a fairly good introduction to our interim superintendent, Dr. Stephen Tracy. The board was fortunate to be able to find him and entice him to come and serve for, I'll say, the duration until we can get a permanent superintendent here. And so we look forward to working with him over the fall. As, although his title is interim superintendent, he has all the rights and responsibilities and authority thereof of being superintendent. So we welcome you to this table and to this district, and we thank you for the service that you're going to give us.
Thank you, Mr. Dwyer. I appreciate it. Appreciate the board's giving me the opportunity to work with the, what I've come to learn is a very fine group of educational leaders. I've had a chance to spend some time with all the principals and get out to all the buildings. And we had a few days last week where we really got down to brass tacks about plans for the year. So I'm very appreciative and impressed with what I've learned so far. I'm slowly meeting teachers and parents, and of course, kids are coming back soon, so that'll change a lot. But look forward to serving you for as long as need be. Thank you.
Thank you. Onto an update on the superintendent search. The process is moving along as per schedule. Our goal at the very beginning is that if everything worked well, we would be able to have a permanent superintendent here in the November-December period. I think we'll hit that goal. And the board has spent a considerable amount of time this past summer looking at resumes, doing interviews, and those things that you do when you hire a CEO of a school district, the superintendent. And so while we're not ready to make any announcements at the moment, we hope to shortly. And we'll, of course, be giving notice to people that, what the board meeting date will be, hopefully in September, where a decision will be communicated and voted and announced. So that's the update. As I think board members know, but the public, I think, has heard us say this before, to attract the best candidates who are currently superintendents in existing school districts, it is not easy if you make it a public conversation, because they have relationships at their home district that are important to them. And if they're not selected, then we don't want to mess up their existing relationships. And so it is conducted by the search committee in an appropriate, and generally that's how these superintendent searches go. So that's an update. Onto new business. Update on facilities plan and waterfall schedule. Do you have any comments that you want to make before, Mr. Cullen?
Just briefly to say that the board package included a detailed description of the district's long-range facility plan all the way through the year 2025 that Mr. Cullen has prepared. And the plan was developed in keeping with the principles that the board adopted some years ago, and is, of course, being coordinated with the town's capital planning. But Mr. Cullen is here tonight to say a few words about it and answer your questions.
Tom?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I appreciate this opportunity. Before I get started, I did bring some extra copies for the public. They're in the back on the table in case they wanted to follow along. What you received in your packet was a letter outlining the summary of some of the changes and revisions we've been working on. Dr. Tittle and I did a lot of work through the year on this. And you should have also received the updated facility plan booklet. It's spiral bound. And then what we call the waterfall schedule, which outlines all the projects by fiscal year. As I stated in the letter, the town finance department wanted a copy of this so that they could refer to the town-side waterfall and facility plan, and with both of those together, send them to the financial consultants that would look over the town's requirements and needs by fiscal year to see if we were in line with some of our numbers. So it's a draft. I haven't heard from them yet, but usually I'll get some comments back. What years look a little heavy, what years look a little light, could we move anything, those kinds of questions. That's all in preparation for the capital workshop summit, financial summit that's scheduled for September 20th. So we wanted to get this to our Board of Education for review and comment, and hopefully answer any questions you may have. The letter I tried to outline, some of the changes we made, it's not all of the changes, but some of the major ones. And I think I don't need to talk much anymore. I'll see if you have any questions and want to review any of it.
To reference, 9/20 is a Tuesday. The Board of Finance scheduled the waterfall meeting for all town departments on that Tuesday, and that's why the board has been moved to Thursday, the 22nd. Since we're a significant part of the capital expenditure plan for the town, it's important for the Board of Ed to be represented at that capital workshop. Questions from the board? Ms. Carnell?
(inaudible) Hope you had a good summer, a nice centane. You were out there putting up the fence at Mill Hill. Couple of things on these changes. Mill Hill Elementary, I'm not sure I understand that at all. Maybe you can just elaborate on the changes you're anticipating?
Sure. Yes, if you recall, what we did to changes to Mill Hill were to copy the changes we did for Holland Hill. So Holland Hill, instead of going in as one big, large project, we separated the initial funding piece for the consultant and the project team. Holland Hill, we broke out 1.24 million, which you all voted on, to hire the architects, the environmental consultants, the site geotechnical, construction manager team, and put the whole team together with the focus on getting better drawings, better estimates, and better proposals to get a harder number to bring to the rest of the town bodies. That's the new approach with Holland Hill. So we broke it, and you'll see it on the waterfall, and in the facility plan as two separate requests. We thought that that was going well at the time, and Dr. Tittle and I thought we should probably do Mill Hill the same way. So you'll see that we broke Mill Hill into two pieces. There's an initial funding request, and then there's the actual project request.
And that's scheduled for 2020?
Correct.
To start it, or request, okay. I guess then the next question, or I smell favorite, if we just changed the turf at Ludlow, why are we moving up a year to change the turf at Ward?
Ward High School's artificial turf field gets less play than Ludlow High School's, but it is over the threshold of 12 years, and we're seeing some rapid deterioration. This summer, we're planning and scheduled what's called a GMAX test on the field. It's a company that comes out and tests by bouncing a lead ball on it, what the consistency is there and for play, and for the safety of the students. But it's failing rapidly, and it was out for two more years. We moved it up one year.
Can't we redirect some of the students to use Ludlow's field, the novel Ward, and what do we give it up to move this up a year? Because I believe Ludlow's was about 600,000?
Ludlow High School's was budgeted at 650. That included the consultant, and when we got done, it ran terribly close. I think we ended up spending about 654,000. So I raised it up for that piece and for escalation, because it's going to be two years out. And Ward High Schools has a shot put and a long jump section mixed in with the artificial turf field, and one of them is a little bit close to the soccer lines. We'd like to look at moving that outside. So I increased the cost a little bit for that. As far as being able to move some of the facilities or the athletic programs from Ward to Ludlow High School, they're both really packed. Both get a lot of heavy use. We wouldn't be able to just move a whole program off of the field and get less use. I think what I'd like to see is get the GMAX test done. There'll probably be a couple of areas where we'll replace a section that we have in onsite, and we'll get another year out of it. But we're not going to be able to go two or three more years like planned.
Is, thank you. Is there anything more trading this for, to move this up? Because that's about $700,000 out of the budget.
No. No, there's nothing that got traded or pushed out further because of it.
Where is the 700,000 coming from?
It was always in the long-range plan. We just, we were moving some things around. You'll see some of the other ones we moved around. Some numbers changed. Some new things got added that weren't on our radar at the time. So what we do is we fiscally look at each year, and we can adjust with some degree of legitimacy, the drawdown on the payment. So if we have a very large project like Holland Hill, the town will ask us, on a $12 million project, $15 million project, how much do you need the first year? How much do you need the second year and all the drawdowns? So we've been able to work out some of the drawdowns based on the job we did with Riverfield and based on what we just did with Ludlow High School. We get a better feel for how much the contractor's asking for in that fiscal year. So it's not always equal, and we can play with that a little bit, and it helps.
Thank you.
Anything else, Ms. Carnell?
No, thank you.
Any other board members have questions? Mr. Llewellyn, followed by Mr. Patton.
Sure. Thank you very much. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Couple of questions for you. If we look at the most recent waterfall, and we look at Holland Hill, I see it's up to 13.24 million dollars. And I looked back at the waterfall from 2013, it was a 9.9 million.
Correct.
What has been that $3 million change? Because I noticed you say that our new approach that we want to use going forward is to get better estimates.
Correct.
So we were off by, you know, thirty-something percent there.
Yep. It's a good question. One of the things that happened, if you'll remember, when we originally looked at Holland Hill, the numbers that were in the old waterfall were for an enrollment of 462. The new enrollment projection now is 504, so they're designing for a 504. So certainly, some of the cost was increased on the actual addition and renovation because of the 462 to the 504.
Okay.
Some of the other things that went up, we received better numbers and working proposal numbers from Riverfield and Ludlow High School, and picked up on a lot of the site costs. We never in the past, in our estimates, were covering a lot of the things that are under the ground. When we put in a site number, we're thinking of, when the contractor shows up, what's he going to do? New. We're finding out that a lot of the school sites, the sewer lines coming in, the power lines coming in, are all dated and old, and they're getting replaced. And it's a lot of the site work we were picking up on Ludlow High School and Riverfield. So we increased some of those numbers. We also had some better locker numbers. That one up 25,000. We had security and safety. Because of this vestibule design at Riverfield, we were covering most of the security and safety things, but not the vestibule piece. FFNE has been a number that fluctuates. Some of the schools have enough FFNE fixtures, furniture, and equipment, and some don't. So we did some work with that number. And alarms, alarms and fire alarms have gone up in cost. We raised a little bit there. So that's why you see the increase in cost between the two.
And what was the amount last year when it was approved initially, before the construction started?
Um... I think it was a million 240 that's been approved for the planning and portables.
Right, so far. No, no. Thank you, though. What was the total amount? The total amount has changed.
I think on the old plan, it was 9 million...
No, I thought, your statement, I think it was correct, about 9.9...
There was an intermediary number.
9,170,527.
Then the previous facilities plan that we approved in June of 2015, the total budget estimate was 9.170,527.
Correct.
This actually breaks it down. If any of us, if anyone still has this, it actually is a really good way to compare the two, so you can see where the prices went up.
So now there's a...
And that was the four-something.
So it's a 3 million dollar...
And this was also the 462 enrollment. It says here 462 capacity versus the 504, which is in the new one.
Right, and I think most of that, I mean, it was 42 student increase or so, at, you know, 3-point-something million dollars. So, you know, I think it's probably more than adding an extra couple of classrooms. And I guess the question is, have you gone and revised, say, Mill Hill and, which, we've got Mill Hill on here, and then the third phase of Jennings? No, where are we here? Hold on, sorry.
No, I didn't touch Jennings at all. That's too far out.
Sorry, I meant Sherman. My mistake.
Um, Mill Hill, we did not. I left Mill Hill alone at 15 million, but broke out the initial team funding at 1.5. So that did go up by 1.5. Sherman, I didn't touch because we have a maximum threshold on that site. If you recall, Sherman is in a wetland zone.
Correct.
We can't go over 2% of the current cost or price of the school building, which works up to about 2.99 something million.
And that's over what period of time?
That's every 12 months. So we can, that's why the project's been broken up into three phases. The first phase was the annex building, which was under 3 million. Then the state says you have to wait 12 months before you can submit another project. We then waited that timeframe, and we put the addition and renovation in, which was just under 3 million. And then we waited the 12 months. But in that timeframe, Sherman got pushed out through these waterfall meetings and some other school projects that took precedence. So now we're moving Sherman back to try and finish it at the 3 million. We can't go over the 3 million.
Right, the 3 million per addition. Okay. So, and I guess another question on here is, if we take a look at our DC, DCS reimbursement, our state reimbursement, I notice in 1314 we have 7.7 million, and I'm assuming that is based on a percentage of the column above it?
Correct.
Is that a fair statement?
It is a fair statement.
So, that's 7.7. Where are we in collections from the state in terms of Ludlow High School and Riverfield? Has everything we've been submitted been reimbursed, and how much we have left out there?
No. No, I can get you a report on that, but the state holds back 5% for the audit phase. The audit phase takes a long time. It's usually two or three years after the project's done. They actually come down, meet at the town hall, want to look at all the books and everything. So they hold back 5% always. I would say that, I can probably get you some numbers on that if you wanted to know.
Sure.
Like Riverfield and Ludlow High School, where we are.
Those are the big ones that are sitting right there. And I guess, so are you saying that we've received 95% of it, or is it something likely significantly less?
I would say if we're in very good shape, we receive 95% of it, and the 5% is held for the audit phase.
Okay.
But I don't know at this time, talking to you, if we received the 95% yet.
But we haven't had any rejected.
Right.
Okay.
Along the way, they will show you and explain to you what is eligible and what's ineligible. So as the change orders come in, and as we submit, they'll pick certain pieces, but it's very small, small amount that gets ineligible.
Perfect. Thank you very much. And then, oh, wait, one last question here. So, the 10-year period we looked at most recently was for a total of net $67 million, and we've increased it to 83 over the 10 years. Is that a fair statement?
Correct, because we've, you know, finished a couple of years, and we've added on one.
Correct. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anything else, Mr. Llewellyn?
Not for the moment, thank you.
Any other questions from board members on, oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Patton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through the chair to Mr. Cullen, of course. You didn't really give a reason why, I mean, certainly it's been a long time to get this Phase 3 in, of why we pushed it out so far and then brought it back in. Was there financial reasons why we could bring it back closer?
Yes. Yeah, I'm glad you brought it up, because it actually was the town that called us. Through 2015 Summit, that fiscal year was over by about 3 million. It's just fortunate, unfortunate for the Sherman community that it was actually 3 million they needed us to move. And when Dr. Tittle and I looked at it, it was the most feasible thing to move at the time. So Sherman got moved out a few years. Now that we've got Holland Hill in place, we've drawn down Ludlow High School and Riverfield. We've been able to look at those numbers and move it back, and we're hoping that it'll stay where it is, and we can get it finished.
Okay, so it's not a slam dunk necessarily right now. That's just what you're proposing, back to the town?
Correct.
To move it back into 17...
But I'm pretty comfortable. The town's had it a couple of weeks now, and I haven't got a frantic call or email, so...
That's always a good thing.
That's a good thing.
In terms of, I guess, the ed specs, were the ed specs for Sherman originally done as one full piece, or were there three different ed specs for the phases?
No, they were broken up because of the reimbursement piece. So the annex buildings went in. They had to have their own building committee and their own reimbursement. And the state would want it that way. They'd want it separate. They used to, years ago, talking 10 years ago, they'd allow us to do phases. They don't do it anymore. They want you to do each piece individually. So...
So there is no ed spec for Phase 3?
Correct, not yet.
At this point?
Correct.
Okay. Because then I had some questions on, you know, in the book, on the capacity deficiencies and stuff, where there's like 3.75, you know, classroom deficiencies. So does that round to four? Does that, like, how does that work? Obviously, without an ed spec, you really can't.
Correct.
You can't go there yet. So, but the plan is basically to complete all the deficiencies between the air conditioning and the alarm.
Fire alarm building updates, correct.
Okay, in this one phase, and we think we can do that for the $3 million or 2.9?
Yes, I'm confident we can do that.
Okay. So now, just out of curiosity, what happens, I mean, in a regular building project that's not, you know, in wetlands with these constraints, you know, with a normal project, we go back to the various bodies, and, you know, you ask for more money, right? If we need it, if we're over by 100,000 or a million dollars, whatever it is. So if we can't go beyond the 2.9 million, what happens? Let's say something happens, and the AC costs 200 grand more, and we go to 3.1, what happens?
We would have to cut something out, unfortunately.
So we literally have to do that, and then we would have to find the money at some point later on, which wouldn't be reimbursed.
Right. I mean, if it's a small item, I don't want to say this, because I know Sherman will jump all over me, but if it's a small item, like the lockers...
I'm not going to open up a can of worms, I just wanted to know, yeah.
I know, she knows I'm going to say the lockers. As an example, if we were needed to cut $100,000, the lockers, new lockers are about 100,000. That's something we could take out and maybe bring back to the Board of Ed in a typical Board of Ed project budget line item, and cover that that way.
In the long, long-range plans or the annual requests? Okay.
Correct. Ideally, we'd like to get as much as we can finished in a typical project with a building committee, with reimbursement under the 3 million. But if there's a couple items that are 100,000, we have to cut back, we could probably put those in, you know, 1718 or an 1819 Board of Ed budget.
Okay.
If we had to.
Great, all right. That's all I have. Mrs. Gerber has a follow-up?
Yeah, just to, to kind of piggyback on that question about the costs, in comparing the two different facilities plans, the one, the older one that had Sherman at 2021, and the new one, which has it at 2017, they're both at 3 million. And it says at the bottom in the old one, total budget in 2021, $3 million, and this one, total budget in 2017.
Yes.
So would there be a, I mean, I would think, I would hope, that since we're actually moving it back, that you wouldn't have quite the escalation that you would with something...
Yeah, we normally can play with that number, but since we have a max of 3 million, we can't go over...
Right, no, and I understand that, but I would just think, I would hope that the odds would perhaps be better.
I would hope so, too.
Because I could see it being, the other way, being a problem. But if you're dialing it back four years, hopefully you'd be able to stay within those parameters.
Certainly, certainly a good set of documents and a good bidding environment would save us in that area.
Right.
Definitely. Thanks for bringing that up.
Mrs. Gerber?
Yep.
One follow-up. Before I get back to you, Mr. Llewellyn, any other board member who has not asked any questions, have any questions? If not, Mr. Llewellyn, you're up.
Sure, thank you. One of the, you know, changes I do notice on here, though, is Fairfield Woods Middle School has $3 million in 1617. That was not on the prior one, I don't believe?
The roof?
Yes.
Yes, it was.
It was.
Yes.
Not the one I'm looking at. I'm looking at the one, I guess, the year before, 2013.
I don't have that with me, but that should be in there. That roof's been there a long time and expired, and we budgeted 3 million, and we came well under that with the bids.
So it was in the last one, but not the 13 one?
It's right here.
Okay. Okay, I said I'm looking at the 13. I don't have that one for me, I apologize.
So this is, this is the 2015 one, right?
The one that we approved a year ago.
Okay, thank you so much.
Anything else? As you know, we, every time there is a change, I was about to say a small change, but every time there's a change in a number here, or a project gets moved one month or one year versus another, that's all to keep it in conformance with the towns. We won't get principal and interest payments that total more than 10% of our operating budget goal. And so we don't reapprove the plan every time there is a small change of that nature. We generally wait till they pile up after about three, four years, and then we say, we really ought to update this at that time. And although the document is presented to you today, Bob Mayer could call up Tom tomorrow and say, I need you to move this there and that there in order to stay true to the town's overall financing goal. So this is a good benchmark for us. But as we all know, projects are not approved until the RTM says they're approved. Mrs. Maxon Canelli?
Just to clarify on one thing that you just said, when Mr. Mayor, if he were to contact the central officer, whatever, is it with a dollar amount or a project that he would be looking to move? I assume it's still within our purview to decide the project.
Yes.
He would say there's a dollar amount that was an issue.
Yeah, he'll usually tell me, this year looks too high by 1.8 million or 3 million. Is there something you can move?
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
And gives us that option.
Okay, thank you very much, Tom.
You're welcome.
Mr. Cullen, my apologies. So we have a series of minutes here, so let me read the recommended motions for each of them. That the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June 7, 2016. Do I have a motion, Mrs. Gerber, Ms. Pitco? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June 7, 2016, please raise your hand. Mr. Patton, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitco, Mrs. Maxon Canelli, opposed. Ms. Carnell, Mr. Llewellyn, the motion passes 6-2. The next set of minutes is enclosure number three, that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June 21, 2016. Mrs. Gerber moves, Mrs. Maxon Canelli seconds. Any discussion on the minutes of the 21st? Ms. Carnell?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to all these minutes, and it's about a page and a half long, so I could either read it, or I prefer to read it. So.
If I can ask for clarification, the amendment is a page and a half long?
Well.
And so you want the board?
To get the essence, it would have to be.
Yeah, you want the board to, I don't mind if you read it, but you want the board to act on it without having something in front of them?
Um, yeah, I mean, it's fine, or I can pass them out. Whatever the board prefers is fine with me.
Do you have copies?
I might. Is there a copy? Yeah, we have copies.
Oh, great.
And I know you asked for, but I just couldn't get to it with word.
Thanks, Mr. Llewellyn.
Is there enough to get to Meg as well?
No.
So the floor is yours.
I didn't know if you wanted me to wait for everybody to take a look at it. This has to do with, excuse me, allergy season, this has to do with one particular section of the minutes. I can read the whole floor, I prefer.
Can you just make the motion first?
Yeah, the motion is to amend the minutes as stated, and have them put into the minutes with all these changes on here.
As shown in bold?
As shown in bulk, and highlighted, at a gray line.
And to clarify, there's nothing crossed out? You're just adding words to the minutes as shown in bold?
That's correct, and also putting the times to make it easier for whoever may need to go back to the tape, because unfortunately, we couldn't last time.
So you've made that motion, is there a second? Mr. Llewellyn, so you've moved and seconded to amend the minutes of the 21st, June 21, as reflected on the sheet that you handed out with the words that are in bold. So what comments do you want to make in this first motion?
Well, unfortunately, I couldn't last time, we couldn't go back to the tape, so I took the toe with the help of Mrs. Garber who submitted her official, and put this all together, and took it out verbatim, exactly what was said during the tape. So I guess, I can't say why anybody won't pass this, because this is exactly what's stated on the tape, and it wasn't captioned or minute.
Anything further?
I'm sorry, what?
Anything further that you want to make, Mr. Llewellyn?
Not yet.
Under the motion?
Sure. And actually, for the benefit of folks who don't have this, why don't we read it? Why don't, do you want to read it?
Yeah, hey, John, I'm?
Sure. So if we look at the minutes, and we move three or four sentences down, it says, "Mr. Dwyer referenced an email and asked Mr. Calabrese if he had any feedback from Cave." Insert, "Mr. Calabrese, yes, I can pull that up." Mr. Llewellyn, what email about Cave? Mr. Dwyer responded, "You commented about whether it is best practice or not, so I asked if Mr. Calabrese got any feedback from Cave." Then the existing minutes say, "Mr. Calabrese, he said, yes." Insert, "I did," and they also agreed that we should move forward like this, and that it is a practice to do so. Then we go back to the existing minutes. "Mr. Llewellyn asked Mr. Calabrese to read the email, and said he found interesting that Cave would recommend moving forward with a program, to an exception that was distributed and wasn't shared with the board." Insert, "Mr. Calabrese, I do not know where it went." Then the existing minutes say, "Mr. Calabrese read from the email, said Cave attorney Rebecca Adams recommended the motion as he stated. The Board can make the motion and discuss. Board Policy Committee can address this in the fall." Insert, "Mr. Llewellyn, could you please read me the question you asked, as well as the response in full?" Mr. Calabrese's response, "That was the question. The email is, I can make this motion, the one I just did, make the exception." Mr. Llewellyn, "So can you please read the email?" Dr. Title stated, "So it came from me, so I called them." Is being inserted ahead of, Dr. Title added that he spoke to Rebecca Adams and confirmed that this was her recommendation. Then we move down three paragraphs, it reads, "Mr. Llewellyn took issue with the way this was presented," and then we're going to insert, "It was presented as though you had email correspondence with Cave as it relates to this, and this is the best way they recommended. Based on the fact that Dr. Title wrote you the email, I'm not sure that this is a fair representation." Then there is one word change here, "he," because it was one sentence previously, "said the correct way to handle this was to correct the policy." Then if we skip two paragraphs, the existing minutes say, "Ms. Carnell asked for the tape to be read back for clarification, because it was no," and insert, "because there was no confusion what Mr. Calabrese had said when he wrote the email. Mr. Calabrese wrote, correct." And now I've clarified that, so I don't think we need to go back to any tapes, so let's move on. And then we continue with the remainder of the minutes. So those are the inserts, and I think the essence or the verbatim, however you like to take the words verbatim or the essence, is that we were presented that an email came from Cave supporting this, and that it was an email directly to a board member, when in fact, it was a conversation that Dr. Title actually had with Cave, and then sent that email. But that email was represented as the opinion of an attorney written directly, and that's very different from a conversation then transcribed.
Any board members wish to make a comment? Mrs. Maxon Canelli?
Two points, and I'll keep it quick. First, to directly reference Ms. Carnell's, I don't know why any board member would vote against these, and it's because I have consistently voted against every single amendment that attempts to be a transcript. This has been presented officially, formally to this board as being a transcript. We don't put transcripts in minutes, period. There was no effort here to capture the essence, and what's more, this isn't even a verbatim transcript, which, when you had raised the issue with me, Ms. Carnell, I asked Mrs. Gerber if she had one, she did, in comparing them now. This isn't even verbatim, but it purports to be a transcript. We don't put those in our minutes. That's number one. Two, to Mr. Llewellyn's point, to interchangeably use essence and verbatim, to me, points to a board that needs to clarify certain terms then. They're not interchangeable, this is not the essence, and this is making an absolute mockery of the bylaw, which is supposed to be capturing the essence, which I thought these minutes initially did very well.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ms. Carnell?
Well, I think the mockery might at this board is that people are allowed to not tell the truth, and nobody does anything about it. That, to me, is the mockery, and maybe that's why we need it transcribed verbatim, because there was tremendous confusion about this whole paragraph, this page and a half. So I don't think the essence of it was captured by Ms. Gerber.
Further comments?
Yeah.
Mrs. Maxon Canelli?
I think it was captured. I think that the confusion that exists was apparently on your part, and so in seeking that clarification, you have here your transcript, and so now you have your clarification. To have amended minutes where there was no confusion for anybody else is not the purpose of these minutes. It was very clear, there was an email with information, I made clear that I had started the initial conversation, that this is exact, I mean, and we're talking, now you're making an argument also for transcription service, and yet you're thinking that that would be a good use of funds, and then you're arguing about a turf field. I can still, I'm still talking, please. This is not what these moments are supposed to be about, and this is a nonsensical way to begin this school year. And in saying, to speak against a fellow board member in the manner that you have done is not appropriate. I did look back at this, and the way that you have portrayed this is not, was there confusion? Yes, it's been clarified. Between people, somebody's integrity like that, I think is quite inappropriate.
Mr. Llewellyn, for the motion, you get the final comment?
Okay. I know I said we should get a transcriber. I agree with you, that would be a waste of time. I think the minutes should be captured correctly. And I think, to use your word, there was confusion at the board paper that night. I still don't think it's clear. I still don't think that anybody knows, I can only speak for myself, I don't think it's clear. It says here that you even reflect to the confusion that you might have even added to it, and that is for the minutes that Ms. Gerber took. So to me, it is still unclear whether the email, why it was stated that Mr. Calabrese wrote the email and then Dr. Title chimed in and said, he did it, he was fed off the title. So, yes, the confusion to me still is as to who wrote the email.
Thank you. Onto the vote?
Actually, I haven't further comment, thank you.
I haven't recognized you here for yet. Mr. Llewellyn?
In reference to Ms. Canelli's comment about transcription and essence, it doesn't really matter.
Verbatim and essence.
Okay, verbatim and essence, excuse me. It's almost irrelevant, because if we do an essence, then we're not capturing it correctly. If we do a verbatim, it's not captured correctly. So it doesn't really matter how we do it, because the person who holds the pen is the one who writes the minutes, and changes have almost never been approved. So I think the point that's trying to be made is, as a board, we should have respect for one another in terms of presenting things straightforward, and, you know, if you read through the additions, things were not presented straightforward. They were represented as though counsel had given an opinion in writing. That's why I asked three times to have it read verbatim. So that's not reflected in the essence or in the words, that I asked three times, and that it went back and forth a few times. So whether it's essence or verbatim is what it is. It, at the end of the day, this board is going to have the minutes that it wants, and, you know, we're going to reflect, hopefully, what we feel happened, because anyone who wants to watch the tape can see that.
Thank you. The amendment that is on the table is to amend the June 21 minutes, June 21, 2016 minutes, as presented on the sheet that was handed out by adding all of the words in bold. All in favor of that amendment, please raise your hand. Ms. Carnell, Mr. Llewellyn, all opposed. Mr. Patton, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitco, and Mrs. Maxon Canelli. The motion fails 2-2-6. Onto the main motion, that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June 21, 2016. All in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Patton, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitco, Mrs. Maxon Canelli, opposed. Ms. Carnell, Mr. Llewellyn, motion passes 6-2. The next set of minutes are enclosure number four, approval of the minutes, that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the special meeting of June 29, 2016. Mrs. Gerber moves. Mrs. Pitco seconds. Any comments on this? Seeing none, all in favor that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the special meeting of June 29, 2016, please raise your hand. Mr. Patton, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitco, Mrs. Maxon Canelli, opposed. Abstain?
I wasn't there.
You were there.
No, I wasn't. I came in at the last minute, so I wasn't allowed to.
Okay, so abstaining because you weren't there?
Abstaining was not present.
You were not present, thank you very much. The motion passes 6-0 and 2. And the last set of minutes, enclosure number five, that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the special meeting of July 11, 2016. Do I have a motion, Mrs. Gerber, Ms. Pitco? Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all in favor that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the special meeting of July 11, 2016, please raise your hand. Mr. Patton, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitco, Mrs. Maxon Canelli, opposed?
Mr. Dwyer, I wasn't there.
Oh.
I'll be abstaining.
You'll be abstaining?
Abstaining.
You weren't present, or abstaining?
Because I wasn't there.
You weren't there, and?
Abstaining, not present.
So, one, two, three, four, five in favor, three abstaining. Correct? 503. Thank you very much. So now, giving his debut superintendent's report.
Oh my goodness. The pressure is on, huh? This, three items I'd like to share with you tonight. The first, the board package includes a list of important district-wide improvement initiatives that the staff is undertaking for the year ahead, keyed to the district improvement plan that was adopted last year. Also included is a list of initiatives that were actually completed last year and are now part of the district's regular and ongoing operation. Our directors are here this evening to answer any questions that you may have about either of those lists. In October, we'll be coming back to you with a report on how the first year of plan implementation has gone, including baseline data, the 2020 targets, and how far the data has moved over the 2015, 2016 school year. So with that, Mr. Chairman, if there are questions, as I say, our directors are here this evening, worked with the staff to put this together, and they'll be happy to answer your questions.
So using the custom of through the superintendent to a staff person, that you might think would be a good answer, any questions from board members on the district initiatives? Mrs. Maxon Canelli?
I'll just start with a few. On the instructional program initiatives, the first one, number one, developing a world language program, does this year's initiative have a more specific focus than that?
Let me ask Mr. Cummings to respond to that, since it's an elementary issue, if you can.
Good evening, Mike Cummings, Director of Elementary Education. In the current, I want to just make clarity on the question, in the current, or the updated district improvement plan?
Just in the district, district-wide improvement initiatives for this year only, just looking, my memory refreshes, is this meant to be targeted at a grade, or?
Yes, and in fact.
That's all I was looking for.
And when you see the school improvement plans, it's specifically for the implementation of curriculum in grade three?
Okay. And then, my second question, and is also through the chair to Mr. Cummings, regarding the math text, I didn't know where that would appear as a, I didn't think it was in the resources, was it? In terms of the ongoing professional development, because I know, obviously, with the textbook that we ended up supporting, that one of the key elements to that was the professional development which accompanied it. Did that just not rise to the level of a district-wide initiative? And I say that only because I, obviously, I noticed some of the other program reviews and curricula that are mentioned here. So I was just wondering if there was, is it number? Okay, so with, I guess, thank you, Mr. Llewellyn, would that be just captured under number eight?
It is captured.
Yes, it is captured under eight, and again, in the school improvement plans, you
will see a line directly related to the use of the, particularly around the resources, but also the professional learning that will occur at the school level to support the new math program.
And so that will be a year, that wasn't just a summer, and now we're setting off and running along.
No, no, you have a lot of work to do.
That's what I was hoping for. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from board members on the district-wide improvement initiatives for 2016, 17? And Mr. Cummings, just before, is it?
No.
No, okay, we're good, thank you. Mr. Llewellyn?
I guess this is a general question. As we look at team and improvement plans, we talk about 11 and 12 here, to continue to improve the effectiveness of data teams at the school grade, best practice models to improve alternative, and both of these note that it's year two of two, which means that we should have had one year of success under our belts. I think it'd be great for the board to get a presentation on I think it'd be great for the board to get a presentation on the data teams, the use of data, how it's been used, how it's improved, because we've all heard a lot about it for years now, and to have a presentation that's pretty specific in how it's being used, because I know a lot of people talk about, oh, we take too many tests, and there's too much focus on testing and the like. But it'd be great to see how the data teams have actually compiled information, used it, and then turned that into an improvement, as we're heading into our second year. And I think in light of, you know, the expansion of adding outside folks into the alternative high school, to understand where, what best practices are being discussed, and, you know, what successes they achieved in their first year, as we look at their second year.
Thank you. Any other comments, Mr. Llewellyn?
Um, let's see. I did have one, one sec. Training teachers to implement the evidence-based reading program. In, under resources, and this might get back to Ms. Cannelly's question as well, 21 and 22, we talk about, and these are both, well, at least the first one's year two of two as well, training teachers to implement evidence-based reading program for struggling readers, research and develop evidence-based reading programs. Which programs are we talking about? What are we using? What have we compared, and how have we arrived at the programs that we're using?
Mr. Cummings, can you respond to that question about, and actually, it might involve Dr. Boyce as well, it's a K-8 question.
We can talk about, as we look at reading programs and research-based reading programs, we look at a continuum of reading support, that looks at tier one, meaning universal reading instruction, all the way through to tier three and tier four, with students who, given best research-based instruction in the general ed setting, require different kinds of instruction. So I can speak to you about the process we used to determine the evidence-based practices for reading of children with disabilities.
Okay.
We looked into a number of different research, we did some research in terms of what our best practice is, in terms of teaching children with reading disability. And focused in on, the literature really points to a structured literacy approach, and in systematic code-based reading instruction. When we looked into that further, that would be programs designed around an Orton-Gillingham based approach. We selected the Wilson Reading Program. And as you can, as you know, because we did it in the budget last year, we put in place a significant amount of professional development money, and we have a three-year plan within that. We discussed at budget time, if you remember.
I do.
About bringing 30% of all of our special ed teachers to level one certification in each of the next three years. We currently have our first cadre, who have completed the, what I would call the classroom-based portion of the training. And they're going into the performance training, so they're going to be getting one-on-one coaching from advanced trainers in the Wilson Reading Program. This year, cadre two will begin their classroom-based instruction.
Right.
Their adult learning, and then next year will be in the coaching section. And the third cadre, which will include any and all new teachers that are hired between now and then, will be a part of that. And then we'll have an ongoing plan for new teachers who come in post that, along with some advanced work for some of our teachers who were in the first cadres, once they have three years under their belt, going into the advanced trainer level. So we end up with a trainer-of-trainers approach. That's the overall plan.
Okay.
And so we selected that among a number of different Orton-Gillingham-based reading approaches. We selected Wilson, because we believe the training protocol is strong.
Right.
And healthy, and they were able to work with a district our size. Not all had the resources to do that.
That's awesome, because I think, you know, to catch the reading issues early on is going to make all these kids have a much more successful.
That's the plan.
Middle and high school. Okay, thank you. And then, in terms of the, no, I'm good, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
If you don't mind, I'd just like to add to that, as Ms. Cannelly already mentioned, the core program, again, there will be more detail on this in the school improvement plans, but as we talked about last year, the core program implementation in addition is the addition of word work, or phonological awareness, work that will be implemented in our, all of our K-1 classrooms, and for grade two, three students, and so on, who need it, as an intervention. Okay, thank you.
Anything further, Mr. Patton?
Not sure if, through the chair to maybe Dr. Tracy, I'm not sure which team member this might apply to. In terms of number 10, using vertical teams to conduct instructional rounds in math, language, arts, social studies, science, and world language. So, we do that now currently, or we've been doing that for a bit. Does anybody have an answer in terms of what the improvement strategy is going to be, to take what we've already done with that area, and enhance it, improve it, do more of it? I mean, is there, is there, what's the, I guess, the plan for that section for next year?
I'm going to have to turn to my colleagues for that, and Ms. Parks can respond, thank you. I'm still trying to catch up with all this stuff, so glad to have help. Perfectly all right.
That's why you have a team.
So, I think what you're asking is, so, what have we been doing? What have we learned, and how are we moving forward? How does this relate to that? So, in the last several years, we've been doing more department-based rounds, so, at a level, so maybe the high school is doing rounds in math, they might be doing rounds in language arts. Because we're very concerned about transition, transition from elementary to middle, middle to high school, the departments, and currently, they've done it in language arts, but just did, started it this year, decided that if we have some student learning issues that are in the elementary, they probably continue in that discipline through different levels. And by looking across levels, we might be able to get a better understanding of what it is we need to do, and what isn't working as well as we'd like it to work. So, we've moved from looking at math at the middle school in one group, a different group looking at math at the high school, and now we're taking groups of people from the high school, looking at math instruction in the elementary, in the middle, and the high school, and seeing what are the, what are the consistent things about student learning that we observe, and what can we address? How can we address them with effective instructional strategies?
Okay, so, I guess if I'm understanding this correctly, so it's not that you would be increasing or decreasing the amount of instructional rounds, or that are done in each of the levels or departments, but more looking at them across grades, and those, you know, number seven, the transition years, that we've all been concerned with, to see, basically, the information that we've been doing before, and to see how it translates across.
Yes, yes, and I think the other piece that you might not be thinking about is, we've trained a lot of teachers to lead instructional rounds. So what we have noticed is, within elementary schools, within the middle schools, and within the high schools, some of the teachers within a department, or within a grade level, are conducting their own set of rounds, to look at something that they're particularly interested in, to know how effectively it's working. But the ones that you see on here, the initiatives, are, as a district, what are we doing? What are we focusing on in this current year on instructional rounds? So now, because some of the other things we're looking at are transitions, we might invite administrators from across all levels, and teachers from across all levels, to join together and do rounds across the levels. Whereas that doesn't discount at one of the elementary schools, or one of the middle schools, or one of the high schools within a department, teachers may be doing rounds within a smaller, within a course in a high school, to see how each other are implementing a specific strategy. So one does not preclude the other, is what I'm trying to say.
No, I, I'm totally with you.
You got it.
By the way, congratulations on your retirement, and welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Patton, I haven't had an opportunity, of course, to see the rounds practice in practice here in Fairfield yet, but I can tell you that it is, in my opinion, a very effective strategy for getting educators as teams to look at the actual impact of curriculum and instruction on young people, and then to reflect on where that may take us in terms of improvement. So I'm looking forward to seeing in practice, a lot of good discussion at the administrative meeting last week, about how this works, and how it can be improved.
Excellent, and I'm sure, the report in October, you'll be learning a lot more about all of this fairly quickly.
Mrs. Gerber.
Through the chair to Mr. Cummings, I'm sorry to ask you to come back up again. The question I had was regarding number 25, increased parent understanding of student achievement, grades K through five, through revised progress reports, take-home student work, and distribution of student assessments.
Yes.
I just, I mean, I'm sure we'll be getting more information later on, but I just kind of wanted to get a general sense of specifically what you were looking at in terms of being able to do this. I know we've talked about it a lot, or the board and staff has talked about it a lot, and I was just curious to see, kind of, where you were at this point, in terms of moving forward.
Sure. I'll break this down a little bit through the actual statement. Back in December of last year, we surveyed the elementary parents around changes they wanted to see in the progress reports. We also worked with our classroom teachers around changes they wanted to see in the progress reports. So, over the course of the spring and in the summer, and in fact, I spent the afternoon, we've been updating the progress reports. We worked to do a couple of things. Wanted to make them more readable and understandable for parents, also to reduce the number. The progress report was a bit overwhelming in length. We've also worked to bring comments into each of the marking periods, where they were only currently, or before, in the first trimester. We were going to also work to get communication out around what those changes are, and the rubrics around what those are. That's part of the work around the progress reports. It's an evolving process, because as you know, the social studies curriculum is going to be further revised, and the science curriculum is going to be further revised. So the progress reports will reflect those changes as they come, but this is the first step to increase the overall communication around those, and to give them more meaning for parents. We're also putting together a letter for parents, giving an overview of, kind of, work-at-home expectations, communication, the adoption of the new math curriculum materials, certainly allows us for more work, in a sense, to be communicated home. But we also are working with our teachers to develop a system-wide understanding of what work should be sent home, and how it should be communicated. So that's going to be part of work, both for our parents to understand, as well as our teachers. And our hope is that eventually, we can create a more comprehensive list, and post it online per grade level, to give parents some understanding of what, you know, you'd expect to see in reading and math, for example. Not specific assignments so much, as the types of things that happen in reading and math, such as homework practices, or in math, for example, or in the reading log in language arts. So those are the types of things. And just as, the other thing I'd like to be able to do is, during the course of the year, update parents periodically with curricular updates, instructional updates, just to increase the flow of communication out from my office, so to, with the goal of helping parents better understand what happens in an elementary classroom.
So I guess this would also kind of tie into number 23, then, expanding the use of infinite campus, because I know that's one thing in elementary, it's really not used to the extent that it is in middle and high school.
Right.
And I know it's been discussed that there is going to be a push to increase that, because I guess my other question would be, how are you going to communicate all of these changes to the parents, especially when you have parents who don't necessarily always go to an infinite campus? So would you be having, you know, like a back-to-school night, or through the PTAs? I'm just, like, and I'm sure you'd be sending emails or something home, but, you know, it's, infinite campus is such a great tool to share information, and I still feel that's one population that hasn't quite gotten up to speed with the rest of the parents.
I think, well, for example, the parent letter that we're looking to distribute, we want to have ready for back-to-school nights, so we can actually put it in people's hands. Those are certain things, absolutely, because I don't think people are as dependent at the elementary level yet on infinite campuses, we would like them to be. I do think, though, as I surveyed the schools last year, there, for an elementary school, there's a lot of communication, actually, through infinite campus. I mean, it pales in comparison to a middle school and high school, because in some ways there's far less going on, but there is. What we're trying to do, and what we're working to, and I cannot tell you that this is going to happen this year, but we want to get to a place where we can use the progress report window, in a sense, to better communicate. So, we're in a process, long-term, of identifying assessments to unit assessments, I mean, excuse me, identifying progress report standards to unit assessments, and having teachers directly grade into that, and then be able to communicate those things out to parents as they happen. But that, we're not going to have a deadline on that this year. That's going to take some time, because there's training for our staff on exactly how progress reports should work and function. It's a philosophical shift away from the, you know, the kind of standard A through F grading, that I don't think was fully implemented when the progress reports were adopted. Well.
You're welcome. Other questions from board members? Mr. Llewellyn?
Quick follow-up on that, the infinite campus, what's the behavior module? I understand the gradebook concept, but it says we're implementing the behavior modules. In the behavior module, infinite campus is essentially, that at the elementary level right now, there's, the infinite campus has an ability, speak directly for state reporting. One of the things that we have to do in state reporting is report out the number of suspensions and expulsions. Middle school and high school are doing this, the elementary schools have not, so we're going to do that now. Okay, so it's tracking that type of thing? Right, you're just, you know, it's a systemic, should help the workflow. Yeah, absolutely. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else? Mrs. Maxon Cannelly.
Just one last question for me, and this is through the chair to Dr. Tracy, actually, to both of you. For number 28, regarding, excuse me, number, what am I looking at? Number 27, excuse me, the racial imbalance plan. I didn't know what the timeframe was for that, and nor do I know what the office has been coming up with for that, but I know normally, we have a presentation and then a vote, and if this is of a sizable enough magnitude, it's just a suggestion that if we're going to need two meetings for discussion, if there are going to be change, I don't know what, what you're thinking of at this moment, but I know we have a deadline that we have to meet at the state.
At the moment, we are looking at the second meeting of October, for the presentation, which would then make the vote, the first meeting in November. It is due between mid-November and mid-December, as the state wasn't like, here's the exact date, but they were looking for it between November and December. So, action on October, November would fit that timeframe.
And so you don't think that, and I'm just asking hypothetically, you don't think there's going to be, I mean, obviously, something like our district improvement plan, we could not have done that in two meetings, with discussion and then a vote. It was of, you know, such a sizable, you know, things to get our head around, and to talk about, and to discuss, and to question. You don't see this thing like that, that one meeting for a discussion, you think will be sufficient? Again, I'm asking this in the vacuum of not knowing what it is that you're, what kind of pieces you're thinking of.
It's going to follow the presentation that Dr. Tittle had made, as a report of our meeting up in Hartford, which is, if we can move one of the preschool programs to a school that is closer to McKinley, we may get more parents opting for that, and so that's part of the thought process. And continuing with the idea that until Mill Hill gets built, we really can't address a longer-term solution. And I think the second item that he mentioned is whether we increase the number of out-of-district students. Right now, we collect out-of-district students through the open-choice statewide program, and if we get a couple more like that, as you know, we're only, all it takes is five or six students to change the ratio to dip under the 25. So those are the kind of things that he talked about, I think, at the meeting, and I think the plan will build off of that. I don't think there'll be anything new beyond what I just mentioned.
Okay.
So that, I'm not, I'm not thinking it requires more than two meetings, but, you know.
I've been working from Dr. Tittle's draft, that I picked up from him last month, and I've also had a chance to chat with the young lady who's the board attorney at the state level, as to timing and format. So, that's the way I'm planning to approach it. Mr. Cummings has been very helpful, because he's knowledgeable about what's going on at the pre-K level, so that's the direction we're taking.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Llewellyn.
Actually, it might be helpful to share that draft with the board, because I think some of those issues could be up for, as Ms. Cannelly says, more than just a meeting for. and a rubber stamp. If we're taking an open choice, you know, that has an impact, it has a cost, it has a benefit. You're talking about moving a kindergarten, would it be into McKinley?
No, no, not a kindergarten.
A preschool, sorry?
Pre-K.
Into McKinley?
No, no, into another school that would be close to, closer to McKinley, because some parents have not wanted to have their kids go all the way over to the other side of town. And if it was at a school closer to McKinley and closer to their own neighborhood, that might make it more appealing to them and therefore boost the participation.
Yeah.
As to the draft, I think once staff feel as though they have a draft that is ready for the board to review, then they can do that, but I think until they have a draft that they're comfortable with, they, staff all the time work on multiple drafts until they get ready for presentation to the Board of Ed, and we have not normally expected them to show us all of their management drafts.
Okay. And I guess, so would you be talking about that preschool in an existing school or a new facility?
I think that's a discussion that the staff are having, and I was not trying to be specific as to exactly what's happening, I was trying to be general as to these are the kinds of things that are being talked about at the staff level.
Okay. And I'm going to respectfully request a copy of the draft, please, because I'd like to see it at early stages rather than when people deem it to be complete. I think it probably has enough shape on it now that I'd like to see whatever the latest draft is. Any other board members like it? I think it'd be beneficial for us all to see it, because these are three new concepts that I'm hearing now, so if I could get a copy, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
I'll be specific. When Dr. Tracy feels that his work product is appropriate for delivery to the public and, to the board and therefore to the public, he'll distribute it.
Okay.
It is not our practice, nor will I tell Dr. Tittle, sorry, my apologies, Dr. Tracy, that he has to show work product.
That's fine. And I'd like to see Dr. Tittle's, and if you need me to submit an FOI as a board member, I'm more than happy to do that.
And I appreciate, I appreciate this is a big topic, and I'll work through it with the staff as quickly as I can and get you as much advance notice as we can get, but I do need some time to chat with the principals who might be affected, and we're going to do that as quickly as we can.
Any other questions on the district improvement initiatives? Ms. Carnell, followed by Mr. Patton.
Okay. Through the chair to Dr. Tracy, I think to Ms. Leffert. So I just want to understand, there's two points. One is that we implemented a research-based common protocol to select the most qualified applicants for vacant positions, and I just wanted to understand that, which dovetails into develop the plan to minimize the impact of teacher absence on student learning.
Could you reference the numbers for the benefit of the board?
On the left page, it's 4.2, and on the right page, it's 19.
Thank you.
Ann Leffert, Director of Human Resources. So during the spring, we had a group of administrators working together to develop a new hiring protocol, which we implemented during the hiring season, which began early May. I'm very pleased with how it came out. We reviewed the process together last week during our administrative meetings and came up with some additional changes that we might want to make or improvements that we'd like to make to the plan. But it was a process that, we got lots of feedback from administrators, that it really helped them with the decision-making process. So that was the new hiring protocol. And then you asked about...
Can you get into a little detail of what that was?
Well, I don't want to go into too much detail, because it's really something that we want our new teachers, when we're, or candidates for new teacher, new teaching positions, to be presented with information prior to their interviews, what they're going to be expected to do, but there were various components. It's not just an interview, there are other steps to the process. We solidified the reference checking process and increased some of the activities that we might want our candidates to go through that helps us make a decision on a new teacher. As far as substitutes, we know that there's a national shortage, there continues to be a national shortage of substitutes. As the unemployment rate goes down, the availability of substitute teachers goes down. I'm working very closely with Bob Smoller of the FEI to come up with, we actually have a draft of a presentation that we're planning to make to our buildings to help teachers understand the issue that we're having with obtaining substitute teachers, especially during certain times of the year. So that's what we're working on there.
Just to clarify, in terms of teacher absence, is are we talking about, you know, someone that may have the flu for dinner, too, or are we talking about somebody that's going on an extended leave?
Not the extended leaves, we're looking at the day-to-day absences at this point. Extended leaves were very successful in getting substitutes there, as long as it's not last minute at the beginning of the year. We have someone we know is going on a maternity leave or has a medical leave for some reason, we're very able to find substitutes in those areas. It's the day-to-day absences.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
Ms. Carnell?
It was a different topic, but if you want to...
No, no, finish your...
I just had, and I'm not sure, this is Dr. Tille, on page 10, left side, number 20, contain options for mental health support for students, so I'd like to ask you a little about how that's going to be done and what that means.
Ms. Leonardi, help us out here.
Andrea Leonardi, Director of Special Education. As you recall, throughout last year, we implemented, we began the process in our first year with the Effective School Solutions Program. That's a, that's a piece of the puzzle, and we'll be presenting some data related to that in the district improvement plan piece in anticipation of budget season this year. We have had a team of our mental health professionals working on some additional supports, similar to what I talked about earlier in reading, those Tier 1 and Tier 2, and so we'll be coming to you with some proposals. And certainly, I'll be going to the superintendent before I come to you, so hopefully the superintendent will, I'll get him on board. Thanks for the pitch.
She's very...
You know, I'm going to go there first, but hopefully it will maintain, and I'll be able to share a proposal that some of our staff have created and taken a leadership role on, and I think it's exciting work for the next layer of supporting a population of students to help maintain high levels of mental health and be able to then use that in terms of student achievement.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is that it? Ms. Carnell or? Yes. Mr. Patton?
Through the chair to maybe Dr. Boyce, on the 2015-16 initiatives, the first one, 118, implementing professional learning on teaching in the block to all high school teachers. I'm not sure who wants to, I suppose my question is, we had a, obviously, a round of that when we switched to the block schedule, and I'm wondering, is there a follow-up on that aspect for the coming year?
Yeah.
Or this summer, for that matter.
Meg Boyce, Director of Secondary Ed. Our teachers responded very, very well to the professional development we provided for teaching in the block. We had a lot of in-house experts, teachers who had already done this and were able to work very closely with their colleagues. The headmasters and the housemasters provided a great deal of support as well in helping this mulligan underway in a very successful manner. So I think now we're probably in a stage of maintaining and improving upon what we have. Obviously, as we bring new teachers into the high schools, if they need support because they have not taught in a block, we will find ways to do that within, with their colleagues or with the curriculum leaders. But I think going forward, we're always looking for ways to improve, but I think we've gotten off to a very good start.
And I just wanted to add that the reason that's showing up on the completed initiatives is not that we aren't focusing on teachers' teaching in the block schedule anymore, but rather than being a large initiative, we felt that all teachers needed support in teaching in the block. And now, Mr. Llewellyn asked about data teams, you asked a question about instructional rounds, so all of those tools and processes are happening. So for example, in math or in language arts, teachers may be meeting in a data team or a PLT, professional learning team, where they will talk about what their, what instructional practices they're using and what they think will help students learn a particular thing. They may visit each other's classrooms in instructional rounds and say, how well is it going? So the professional growth hasn't stopped, but now it's become much more on the granular level, where teachers within specific courses are looking at each other's instruction, looking at the outcomes for students, and looking at the data to see if they're meeting those outcomes, and then reaching out and asking for much more specific to the teacher professional growth that they may, may need for not only teaching in the block, but teaching their specific content in the block. So it hasn't stopped, it's just, this was a large initiative across all high school teachers, now where teachers are more identifying their own particular professional growth needs as opposed to strategies for in the block.
Okay. I mean, I know before he left, I had conversations with Dr. Tittle during the second half of the year about, you know, it's obviously the vast majority of teachers at the high schools, you know, managed quite well with the new type of schedule and whatnot, but there were, you know, there were incidents where, you know, some teachers struggled to try and adapt to that format and, you know, material not, you know, possibly being covered by certain dates and that, so it's more of the follow-up to that, that sort of thing with the teachers, you know, that maybe, you know, had some issues, you know, in the first half of the year, and I guess maybe, how was it, was it addressed? I mean, that certainly wasn't in like the, you know, the teacher evaluations kind of thing, that's more literally like professional development. So I don't know if we had extra things that we were doing or ongoing and that sort of thing.
Yeah, so I think this initiative was more about particular strategies that are effective in, specific to teaching in the block, that would apply to anybody. One of the things the high schools were able to do because of the block schedule is try to schedule teachers' planning time, for teachers who teach the same course or this, or in the same department, give them common planning time, and they actually identified that this is time for you to plan individually, and on these days, we have an expectation that at least during part of that block, you will not just plan alone, but you will plan with a colleague who teaches the similar course or the same course. And a lot of that sharing is when teachers determine, well, how is it going for you? What are you trying? And that's where they are able to say, well, I'm not sure I know how to do that. So some of the best professional development they can get is going into another teacher's classroom who is doing something really well. And so that's what I mean by it's more on the granular level now, so it's really those conversations, and then teachers have conversations with their administrator during the course of the year, which is related to the teacher evaluation plan, and how are you getting to your, are you, do you think you're going to meet the goals that you set out for yourself? Well, actually, no, I'm really struggling with this, and it's the administrator's job to say, well, how can I help you? What professional development do you need? Where can we send you to get that? Do you have a colleague? And they may consult with the curriculum leader to find out how to get the teacher that professional development, because it's now much more specific to the individual teacher, just like for kids.
And another thing I would add is during the summer, the curriculum leaders pull together groups of teachers to work with, and one of the things they look at is they reflect back on the year and look at the pacing, and if they see that they need to make an adjustment in the pacing, and we knew that would be one thing they would have to take a close look at with the teaching in the block. And so some time was spent this summer going back over the curriculum and the pacing guides to see what adjustments, if any, had to be made in terms of addressing all the parts of the curriculum.
Okay, that's, that's great. And I wasn't aware of the, you know, trying to arrange the teacher's schedules so that they could, you know...
Yeah. They've done a nice job of that in both.
Yeah, that actually, that's a great idea, so I guess we couldn't do that before. So, all right, thank you.
With no further comments, we'll move on to the education legislation summary...
Thank you both.
...that we get annually.
You have in your package from the Shippman Goodman folks, a summary of significant legislation from the General Assembly's 2016 session that impacts what goes on in schools and classrooms, and I think best would be for people to ask questions if there's things that you'd like to know that I can answer or find out for you. The significant changes that I spelled out in my summary were, one, requirements with respect to protecting the privacy of student data, two, some new requirements around what the school board's obligations are for students who may be expelled from school, and finally, an opportunity for those districts that wish to, to defer the changes in graduation requirements from the class of 2020 for a couple of years. Right now, the class of 2020 represent your incoming freshmen, and they will be held to a new state graduation requirement of 25 credits as compared to the, to the 20 that's existed up to now. So this new piece of legislation that's mentioned in this package provides an opportunity to defer that if you were to wish to do so. Those are the highlights.
Any questions on the work of our legislative leaders? Mrs. Maxon Canelli, followed by Mr. Llewellyn.
Just one quick question regarding the graduation requirements. I assume that then the board would be receiving a recommendation from central office in terms of their, because that's something in policy that we've been holding off on doing, because no need to reinvent the wheel there, it's a fairly large topic, so I assume that will be forthcoming at some point.
Yes, that's right, and we're still awaiting some clarification and changes from the State Department of Education. There are a number of amendments that would need to be made. The current policy, as I've looked at, is still represent, still references cap testing and CMT testing and things that are no longer taking place. So I think the intention is to give the state folks a chance to finish their work, so we've got the complete package, and then we can come to the board or the administration can come to the board with, with a comprehensive set of amendments to your current policy.
And as a comical follow-up to that, any idea of the timeline of the state on that?
I, I don't have an answer to that. I don't know whether any of my colleagues do.
I kind of was guessing, but...
I think we would be jeopardizing ourselves to put a date out there for you. But there are a number of changes that will have to be made discretionary. Do you want to defer, or do you want to stick with the schedule to bring the class of 2020 online as the current or previous legislation called for? And then cleaning up a lot of language that refers to tests that are no longer given.
Thank you.
Ms. Llewellyn?
Actually, my comment or question, I guess, is to your first comment on student data, and I don't expect you to know the answer, but it would be good to know that since this law is coming into effect on October 1st, that all of our contractors and subcontractors are in full compliance with that, just as a note, because, you know, as I read it, and I actually saw it in some other journal I received, and I know that this is kind of a hot button, especially as it relates to some of the FERPA violations and student data correcting erroneous and review of the person identifiable. So it'd be good to know that we're actually in compliance.
And I've shared this, this new development with our data leaders, and so I'll check with them and happy to get back to you on what are we doing to make sure?
Okay, thank you.
Because we, you as a board, are accountable not only for what your staff does, but what contractors may do in your name, so...
Thank you.
Anything further? On, Mr. Patton?
Sounds like you're about to say something else. Just to piggyback on the graduation requirements that you started talking about, Jen got my first question answered. Can you just speak to, just reading this, it's, I guess I'm not understanding the whole, if you've received a building project grant, you can delay, so like towns that don't do any construction and don't receive any grants can't? Like, that's, I...
I'm not sure why, that does seem like rather unusual language. I have to believe that captures almost every school board in the state, and it must have been some reason, and I don't know what it is, to, as to why they use that as a hook. I suppose if you were a district that hadn't done any projects for the last many years, you wouldn't be qualified for this exemption.
It was almost like a dangling carrot kind of thing, like, we're rewarding you because of...
I'd have to check with the folks at Office of Legislative Research who know why it was written in that particular... written in that particular way, but clearly this district would qualify, and every other district that I'm aware of has had projects reimbursed by the state over the years.
It just read very strange, and I didn't know, I'm like, why would that matter? But, okay.
Anything else? Move on to summer 2016 work and projects update. Mr. Cullen?
Ask Mr. Cullen to come back to the table. And in my travels around all the schools, I've seen evidence of a tremendous amount of improvement and work that's being done and ongoing even today. And you have a, you have a summary from Mr. Cullen and.
It's enclosure number eight. Mr. Cullen.
Thank you very much. It's really just informational. It's, I'm very pleased with a lot of the improvements we did at the schools. It's very impressive if you get a chance to drive around. Four big paving projects we did at the schools that just turned out fantastic. The new exterior lighting at Dwight is just beautiful. There's just a bunch of handful of projects that when you drive around and see, the improvements are just fantastic. Saying that, the nine weeks of summer goes by so fast when we're trying to get all these done. There are a handful that won't be finished in time for school to start. None of them are really critical. I mentioned in the letter, boilers, we know they take a long time to order. In all three cases where we're doing boiler work, there are boilers online. We need boilers around October 15th. So like Ludlow High School's getting two of the three replaced. The one that remains was repaired and is running and will feed the school until the temperatures get really cold. The two at North Stratfield are under warranty and being replaced, but they're running. And at Jennings, both boilers are running. It's the pump work they're doing. So things like that. Field work like Stratfield's elementary school, the recreational field, we normally don't do field replacements in summer, it's too hot. That is going out to bid soon and will be ready to work on in October, so we knew that ahead of time. A couple of the ones that surprised me were the Jennings Playground. Equipment took 12 weeks to order. He's running a little behind, so we're trying to push that ahead and get that going. I've talked with the principal. And a couple other small flooring jobs we wanted to do, when we went to pull the carpet up, they have vinyl asbestos tiles under them. We didn't expect that in a couple locations, so we cover those back up until we can seek the funding for the abatement. And I think the Dwight Playground, the Dwight Playground is to replace the stairs going up to the playground. He believes he'll get all the concrete in, but we might be missing the railings, which are a long lead item, but we can get by with that. So nothing really major. Generally, I wanted this to give you for informational purposes. Many of them on this list are right out of the budget. A lot of them fall under other categories like paving or painting. And then there's a handful that we didn't even start because we knew we wouldn't get them going, such as Tomlinson Middle School, the gymnasium hardwood floor. That's a very big project. There was no way we were going to get that designed, bid out, accepted, the wood ordered, and finished in time. So we'll work on those and hopefully go out to bid in the January, February timeframe, have the award ready end of March, beginning of April. They can order all their hardwood and material and be ready to start as soon as school closes in '17. So I'm happy to report we're in very good shape.
Any comments or questions from board members? Mr. Patton.
Okay, where do I want to start here? So I'll start with possibly my faulty memory. Do we, was it, was it removing oil tanks? Or why did I think that we already were replacing boilers at North Stratfield last year? What did we do at North?
No, two years ago, we did North Stratfields.
We did, so we did replace the boilers?
Yes.
So that, so what does this mean that it says that we're replacing the two Camus boilers replacement project? Is that?
Yep, we had one of the Camus boilers show a water leak inside, and under warranty and with a great contractor we have, we fought with the manufacturer and not only admitted that they have a failure, but are willing to replace both, even the one that's running fine and not leaking, at no cost to us.
Okay, so these are the, these are the brand-new boilers?
Correct.
Okay, so that's why I was.
There's, there's three at North Stratfield. There's two Camus boilers that run on gas only, and then there's a Bedarous that runs on oil or gas.
Okay, so that clears that up. On the various solar projects, I guess it's really Mill Hill is, is my question is, and Holland Hills, well, do they affect the potential renovations by putting panels on roofs that may be?
No. In all cases, we're putting solar on schools that have new roofs for a couple of reasons. One, we want to make sure we're not damaging old roofs or putting solar on a roof that's going to need to be replaced soon. Two, the company we're working with is putting down a rubber membrane before they put the panel down that's guaranteeing us five more years on the warranty of the roof. So we're always doing solar panels or solar projects on school buildings with new roofs.
Okay, and the manufacturers, they're giving us that extra five years on those?
Correct. They're working with our roofing manufacturers and contractors.
And were they, obviously, we're getting a, I assume, using the same company for all of it. Is this a program that was brought to us, like some of the town projects, or is this something that was an initiative that your department?
Yes, actually, it's not the same company at all the schools. We're working with about three of them right now, and they actually come to us. They come down from the state, we get reimbursement from the state, they're looking for schools to do solar projects, and they look at the assessment of the school building, how much coverage they can get, still have access to equipment and everything, and see if it's worth the savings. And then they write up a contract for us to review, we go over with them the amount of penetrations and things they're going to do, and the details, where they're going to mount everything, and come to a mutual agreement, and then sign a contract.
Okay. And hopefully we'll be able to project some kind of budget savings in the next current budget.
We do. We have and we do. When we look at our utilities, we document when they go online, what the savings would be. And I'll give you an example, like a high school level, the savings is in the $28,000 range. At an elementary school, it's more around $6,000, $8,000 on the utilities.
On a monthly basis.
Correct. And we document those and work them into the budget.
We're seeing those savings in the budget.
Yes.
Okay. Riverfield, is this something we were aware of, that repairing the new gym floor and stage? Was that something that we were aware of from the building committee?
No, not from the building committee, but after they were done. We had some damage accidentally by a reservation program on the painted gym floor that was an easy fix and repair that we had done, and we worked with the town on that. The stage floors of a synthetic wood material, and they put it in a little too tight and it buckled, so they had to come back and do some saw cuts and loosen it up. None of it was charged to us.
I was gonna say, and it's all under warranty?
Yes.
From the existing?
Correct.
Probably embarrassed myself by asking this question, because it was in almost every school here, under the safety things, I wasn't sure, and I believe my 12-year-old kind of spelled it out for me, but under the security, safety upgrades, lockdown porta buckets, is that what I think it is?
I hope so. Yes.
This is portable bathroom?
Yes.
Facilities in case that they can't leave the classroom?
Correct.
For any grade level, okay.
Yep.
So no more detail is needed.
No more details needed. We're good with that. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other final questions?
Mr. Llewellyn, you've got the last question.
Thank you. Real quickly, one of our more recent favorite topics, air conditioning. As we all air condition two more buildings, what, are you able, in the email exchange I had seen, you're able to remotely monitor the system or the temperature, or what can you remotely monitor?
We can remotely, from a notebook computer, go in and see what the temperature settings are set at for an existing piece of equipment. We can determine what the temperature is in the building.
The actual temperature.
Temperature is outside, and find out if it's in unoccupied mode or regular mode. There's certain things we can do and switch on and off.
Okay, so if it's in unoccupied mode, and the temperature is far lower than it should, should be, that would be an indication, I would think. But I guess, why are we not shutting off the systems in the summer?
Well, we don't, we don't ever shut them down.
But why?
Mainly because of, like, the month of August was such a hot and humid month, the school buildings that don't have any conditioned air, we saw problems. We see humidity problems, moisture, even VCT tiles start to pop and loosen.
Okay.
It is really affecting the schools. It really affects the school books, areas that are carpeted, libraries. So where we do condition the schools, we want to regulate the air and temperature and climatize it. In what we call unoccupied mode is it raises the temperature. Regular mode, we're looking at somewhere between 68 and 73 degrees is what we want comfortable. Unoccupied mode is like 75 to 79. And if you notice through August, there were many evenings where the temperature was 81, so these units were kicking on.
Right.
And they need to condition the school, otherwise, things like high schools that have laboratories and all this equipment stored in there are going to see damage if they don't.
And I get the moisture concept, but we couldn't achieve that at something slightly warmer than 75 or 80 for unoccupied?
No, no, not occupied mode.
Unoccupied now.
Yeah, unoccupied. I haven't seen us go any higher than that. I did want to bring that to the attention of some of the engineers we have working with us now to see if, what the intent would be or what the savings would be if we did go a little higher.
Yeah, I mean, because if it's 100 and, if it's 100 degrees outside and you have it set at 85, you're still pulling all that moisture out because it's running.
Correct.
But we're saving, I would guess, like, last couple of weeks of small fortune.
The other people I'm dealing with are the custodians, they're trying to mop and wax the floors, so the higher the temperature.
That's a good point, too.
The sealant isn't sticking.
All right.
So we're working on that, so.
Okay. And are they zoned, so you can work on one section of the building and?
Yes, in most cases, yes. Not as much as I'd like to see it. You know, hospitals are zoned by room. Schools districts and school systems do 10 to 12 rooms on a zone.
You just have to ask Phil the next budget if you can get by room. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
If there are no further questions on that, we'll move to committee liaison reports. Any committee or liaison reports from any members of the board? Mrs. Gerber.
I just wanted to give an update on Osborne Hill. They just, the building committee met last week, and they're going to give the connector another shot. They're going to put it out to bid in September and hopefully get some bids back that will be within the amount of money that they have left, which is a tremendous amount based on previous, obviously. If they had the money, they wouldn't be rebidding it, but, so I'll probably be able to report back in October or November as to where that stands. But obviously, no work would be taking place until next summer, anyway.
Thank you. Any other committee or liaison reports? The Holland Hill Building Committee has their next meeting on August 25th this week. As reported, they're on time, they're on budget in terms of the $1,240. That doesn't mean that some items are a little bit more expensive, others a little less. They've worked it out within their contingency. That is, as you know, just the planning and design phase of the project. They, once they have firmer numbers, then they'll bring that project forward for full funding to the appropriate bodies, selectmen, board of finance, and RTM. That's it for Holland Hill.
Are the portables?
Wait a second. Mr. Llewellyn followed by Mr. Patton.
That was my question. Are the portables in place now?
The portables are in place. Do they have some hookup, or are they, like, all done, Mr. Cullen?
Sure. Portables are in place. The item we're having difficulty with, which we just heard today, was the UI electrical connection. They're a little behind and told us the best they could do is August 31st, so it's going to be a little close to get them powered and energized. But if you get a chance to drive up there, they're in place, they look great, the security fencing is around them, very impressive. They're brand new, if you walk inside, they look fantastic.
That was my introduction to Holland Hill, by the way. I was driving from one place to another in town, trying to find all the schools, and I see this classroom going down King's Highway, so I said, I'm gonna follow that guy, and that's how I'm gonna find Holland Hill.
Where's that going?
They're in, we just have to get them plugged in.
Yep, correct.
Any others? If not, open board comment? Any comments that people wish to make at this time? Mrs. Maxine Cannelly?
Just one quick comment, I wanted to reiterate a comment I'd made at our second June meeting, which was regarding the board's commitment to its communication with the public and having that town hall session. I assume, as I recall, last time, Mr. Dwyer, that it came down to you putting something out to start working out dates, but I just wanted to reiterate, not drop the ball on that, reiterate my interest that the board conduct that at some point this fall.
Yeah. October is the month that I, in my own mind, have been aiming at, and so I'll send out an email that suggests some dates, and we'll see. We have done them at night, and then we did one on the weekend. Any preference from the board, which one we do this time?
Night.
Night? Have one vote for night?
Night.
Two? Three?
I think the weekend gives possibly greater group of folks, but, I mean.
Yeah, okay.
That would work as well.
Well, I'll give you both dates, and the majority will say which one they like. But at the moment, it seems like night is going to be popular, but we'll see. Any other open board comment? Any other open board comment? The next item on the agenda was placed on there in the event that we had a need to meet as an executive session. I've polled the board, and it's my understanding, if I go around and just confirm, that nobody here has a question, so therefore we will skip over items 10 and 11 and go immediately to item 12. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Patton followed, segued by Mrs. Gerber. All in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous with 8-0. Thank you very much.
Welcome to your first meeting.
Thank you.
First meeting, first vote.
Yes, fair enough.